I have 6 o'clock.
Sir.
Are you ready to start? Okay, so I'm going to start the recording again. Okay, good evening and welcome to the September 15th School Committee meeting. The only announcement I have to make is that next week we will be meeting on the 22nd at 6 o'clock. And we will be going into executive session to conduct bargaining with the Teachers Association. At the end of this meeting, we will be adjourning from executive session. We won't be returning from here, but we will not be returning back to regular session. Okay, Dr. Leclerc, did you have any announcements?
I just wanted to let everyone know that school began officially yesterday. Students returned to school in remote learning. And by all accounts, our first day went off very well. Of course, there are glitches. We had a few technology challenges, but our IT team has been working diligently to address any issues that are reported to them. I think some of it is beyond our control, like Zoom, I think, is being used nationally at a very large rate. And I think it's overpowering the systems occasionally. But I've received a lot of positive feedback from families, from teachers, from our administrators. So I'm really pleased with the rollout of our remote learning. I think it's a very challenging schedule. And I think that people are going to, you know, get immersed in it and get set up with the schedule rather quickly. I do want to also remind people that if they are challenged with login information or something happens to their Chromebook, the first line of defense is to reach out either to your child's teacher or to the IT department or to the building administrator. So those folks are all there to help assist the families in our communities, but please let them know. And Shannon, did you have a question?
I just wanted to know if you could just give the IT information, like contact information?
Sure, well, the best thing to do is to alert the building principal and they'll put in a ticket. And the tickets get addressed in order that they're received. So work tickets just get distributed amongst our IT staff. Whoever is up next gets the next ticket and they address it with passwords and things. Lori?
I don't think we did roll call.
You're right. Oh, my goodness, I am so sorry. How bad of me. Thank you. All right, so we'll roll call in and now that Marissa's here, it's even better. I apologize.
You're waiting for Marissa, that's fine.
Mayor LaChapelle. You're unmuted. Can you just roll call in?
Mayor LaChapelle.
Mearing?
Aaron Goldstein here.
Shannon.
Shannon Dunham here.
Lori?
Lori Garcia here.
Jonathan.
Jonathan Schmidt here.
Marissa.
Marissa Curry here.
Cynthia Kuzinski here. My apologies. I'm tired. It's my first week of school again. I'm putting in a lot of hours. All right, so thank you. So now-
Cynthia, I just have one more thing. We also had kindergarten screening the past two days and that went really well. It was in the tents. And the tents are at all the elementary schools, the smaller tents. And I can tell you, I visited all of the schools today, the elementary schools. And it was wonderful to see. Parents were thrilled to be there. Students were happy and the staff that was there was all doing a fabulous job. So kudos to all of them. But that went really smoothly the last two days and thank goodness the weather cooperated. And it was a little chilly to start today, but we did it. So I just wanted to put a plug in for all the K staff that was there.
Yeah, thank you. That's good news. I like it. So now it's time for public speak. So I'm going to ask anybody who wants to speak to please signal that they want to. You can raise your hand. And I am going to remind you to please keep it to two minutes if you can. And I see Ben Hershey.
Hello. I just wanted to give a quick thank you to everybody. The first couple of days of school have been very smooth, surprisingly. There have been lots of little things, but it's been fantastic to see a range of teachers, or at least hearing about a range of teachers responding with confidence and, you know, clarity and a lot of compassion towards the kids. After a whole summer of just like nonstop intense planning, it was just amazing to see this thing open up and become a reality. Just thanks to everybody. There's still so much to do and to figure out, but after all this work, it's just great to see it coming to life for the kids. So that's all. Thanks very much, everybody.
Thank you. Anybody else for public speak? Give it a second. I don't see anybody. All right, so we will go on. Subcommittee updates. It looks as though all we have is policy. And there are a number of things to do. And you'll just have to bear with us. We'll go as quickly as we can.
All right, is everybody unmuted?
Unmute.
Are you ready? Okay, I'd like to make a motion for the second reading of EBCFA face coverings.
I second that.
Okay, Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Mearing?
Mearing Goldstein, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
And Marissa?
Marissa Curry, aye.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye.
I'd like to make a motion for the second reading, what? Oh, there's a mistake, sorry. I'd like to make a motion for the second reading of JL Student Welfare.
I second that. Okay? Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Mearing?
Mearing Goldstein, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Good. Marissa?
Marissa Curry, aye.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye. Cynthia, can I ask something before we go on? Because we're all visible, isn't it possible now to say all in favor and raise your hand? We tried it. We tried it a number of times. So that's why if we can just do them quickly, we'll get through. Yeah, no, we all tried it.
I'd like to make a motion for the second reading of EBB First Aid.
I second that.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Mearing Goldstein, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Lori Garcia, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye.
I'd like to make a motion for the second reading to delete EBB Accident Prevention.
I second that.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Mearing Goldstein, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Lori Garcia, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa Curry, aye, sorry.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye.
I'd like to make a motion for the second reading to delete EBBA First Aid.
I second that.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Mearing Goldstein, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye.
Sorry, I'm letting somebody in. I'd like to make a motion for the second reading to delete JLCD Policy for Administration of Medications.
I second that.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Mearing Goldstein, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Lori Garcia, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa?
Marissa Curry, aye.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye. Marissa, you can leave it on. There's only us, so okay.
My kid's watching a movie. He's a soundbanger.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion for a second reading of JLCD Administering Medication to Students.
I second that.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Mearing Goldstein, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Lori Garcia, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye.
I'd like to make a motion for the second reading of EFC Free and Reduced Price Food Services.
I second that.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Mearing Goldstein, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Lori Garcia, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye.
I'd like to make a motion for the second reading of JCA Assignment of Students to Schools.
I second that.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Mearing Goldstein, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Lori Garcia, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye.
I make a motion for the second reading to delete ICA School Calendar.
I second that.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Mearing Goldstein, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Lori Garcia, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye.
I make a motion for the second reading of IC/ICA School Year School Calendar.
I second that.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Mearing Goldstein, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Lori Garcia, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye.
I'd like to make a motion for the second reading of JH Student Absences and Excuses.
I second that.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Mearing Goldstein, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Lori Garcia, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye.
I'd like to make a motion for the second reading to delete IDR School Day Procedure.
I second that.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Mearing Goldstein, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Lori Garcia, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye.
I'd like to make a motion for the second reading of IKEE Promotion and Retention of Students.
I second that.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Mearing Goldstein, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Lori Garcia, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye.
I'd like to make a motion for the second reading of IHB Special Instruction Programs and Accommodations.
I second that.
Mayor?
Oh, Mayor LaChapelle, aye. I didn't hear the second, sorry.
That's okay.
Mearing Goldstein, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Lori Garcia, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye.
I'd like to make the motion to accept the second reading of IHBA Programs for Students with Disabilities.
I second that.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Mearing Goldstein, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Lori Garcia, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye.
I'd like to make a motion for the second reading to accept IHBF Homebound Instruction.
I second that.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Mearing Goldstein, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Lori Garcia, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye. And once again, I just want to thank the Policy Subcommittee for all the hard work. All these deletions and additions are pretty amazing. So thank you. I would like to thank Shannon because she really has taken this on. It is all her work and we go along with her. And of course, we discuss it, but she is so diligent with this. I give her a lot of credit. She is a driving force for this, so you'll have that book clean.
One thing I do want to mention, we do have another meeting on October 6th at 5 o'clock. It's, we're going to try and get back on our Tuesday off schedule from the school committee meetings. And at that point, we're going to start finishing up the policies that we need to change for the supplement for homeschooling.
Excellent.
Thank you, Shannon, as well.
So now time for Superintendent update.
Good evening, everybody. I have a presentation tonight on health metrics. I know that we have earmarked next week, the 22nd, to really look at our health data in East Hampton. But I wanted to bring a brief presentation to you to kind of dig down a little bit into how we should look at that data and what we should be considering when we look at that data. So let me see if I am able to share my screen. Can someone give me the ability to share my screen?
Are you doing it, Shannon? Let me look. Yep, right here. You should be able to do it now?
Yep. So I thought that I would share this information with you tonight. And if you have questions, you can ask them tonight or you can ponder this and we can circle back to it next week when we actually look at figures. I do have some current health data for East Hampton on another slide, but-
Dr. Leclerc?
Yes?
I'm sorry, can you just clarify as you go into this? Is this set in stone or is this something that's going to be under conversation and-
Well, this is a conversation. We are, so I put this together based on what I'm seeing from other communities, based on health metrics that the state is using, that are being used nationally. And I'll cite those on the last screen, on the last slide. And I ran it by our health agent to get feedback from her. And so she reviewed it. And we are, of course, still negotiating with the union at this point in time. So these are all kind of in play. But I don't think there's anything really set in stone here. I'm just trying to give some guidance about how we're looking at the data and what pieces of data we should be considering and how we should be considering it.
Thank you.
Does that help? Okay. So when we begin to think about any kind of opportunity to bring students back into schools, there are some assumptions that I am making. And so I put this in front of you first and foremost. I'm hoping that people with underlying health conditions are encouraged and supported to stay at home. We want to make sure that the ventilation is being reviewed and recommendations are being made to meet or exceed the ASHRA standards, which we're going through that procedure right now, that process right now. And we've talked about that already in this meeting. We are making the assumption that all of the health procedures are going to be in place, including distribution of our health masks, proper hand washing, physical distancing. We're doing all the things. If we're having a conversation about bringing students back into our buildings at any time, even, you know, next year, we're saying that we're making the assumption that these, these things are put in place. And first and foremost, we want to ensure that students with the greatest needs are being brought back first. So those are the assumptions that are helping to guide my thinking about this. Now, based on the average daily cases, we're looking at the Mass Department of Public Health Weekly Report. And I think probably everyone's seen that at this point in time. If you haven't actually dived into, dove into the report, you maybe have seen the color-coded map that the news carries every week, which tells us about different colors and kind of what they mean. And we can easily look at that and see how we're doing in our community. Obviously, if your community is red, that's not a great week for you. That means in cases, you have more cases than you really should in your community. And you need to take a look at, you know, whatever is going on in your community. It could have been a party that got out of hand. It could have been any circumstance. Moderate risk is yellow, low risk is green. And communities with fewer than five cases are not even really given a designation. They're simply unshaded. And so those are, that's not an assumption. That's the, the basic Department of Public Health Weekly Report and how it's broken down. And you can find that right on the mass.gov website and it's called their weekly report. Now, the Department of Education provided this information to school districts at about the beginning of August. And it's a guide to help us interpret how we should proceed if all other factors are equal. And in East Hampton, I think it's fair to say that one of the challenges that is creating an extenuating circumstance for us is the state of our buildings. So we have been in green or yellow since the Department of Public Health started putting weekly information out. So we could be in hybrid, we could be in full in-person, or we could be remote if there's extenuating circumstances. And I think we are leaning, we leaned towards remote to be really cautious about the virus. And I think we also wanted to get a lot of feedback on our buildings. And I think the mayor, you know, has that insight to keep the buildings closed for the immediate future so that we can get that proper assessment and do the things we need to do to make our buildings safe. But this is the metric that many communities are using to guide their understanding about whether they're moving between a hybrid, a remote, or a full in-person model. Obviously, if your community is in red, you should be thinking about moving into remote. And when I say moving in that direction, the Department of Education and the Department of Public Health is saying that you should be looking at trends of three weeks, three-week trends. So if we saw one week of red in East Hampton, we may not necessarily make a decision to go remote instantly. We would want to see what are the trends? Is it trending upward or is this some circumstance that happened? This might occur in a college town, for example, where all of a sudden college students come back and maybe there's an incident. So one piece of data that you should be considering next week is the actual case count, the actual number of cases in East Hampton, not just next week when you look at the data, but for the previous few weeks. And I will provide all of that to you. Now, the Department of Ed and the Department of Public Health strongly suggest that we look at cases in the entire region per 100,000 people because there are small communities, there are large communities. So in order to get a really valid statistic, we need to look at a larger piece of information. And even though East Hampton is our core community, it's our core municipality, we have educators and staff members that work in other communities that come into East Hampton. And we have people in East Hampton that go out of the community for jobs and then come back into the community. So we want, we live and move throughout different communities. So we want to consider communities all around us. So we use regional data because staff and students come from outside of our community. We do have school choice students as well. It establishes a statistically significant population level for meaningful interpretation of trends. And it's calculated using the DPH data. So we wouldn't just look for trends in East Hampton. We would be looking for trends in our region because there can be flare-ups regionally. Right now, in the region, we're a little bit low, but that could change. And how is it calculated? There's actually a formula. And Bree does this formula for me if I ask her to. Bree, our health agent. But this is the actual formula that we use. The state provides the case count for the last 14 days. And then the formula is to take the case count for the last 14 days and divide it by the county population. So for example, if, if the county had 64 cases in the last four day, 14 days, and we divided that by 160,000, which is the, the number of the population, we would get a rate of 2.857 would be our percent of cases in our region, which is still not a bad average. Now, the other piece of information you should be asking of me or we should be providing to you is the percent positivity rate. All right, so that's another statistic that I will provide. So this is the percent positive test in the last 14 days. Again, we'll use East Hampton and the surrounding communities. And it's provided daily from the Department of Public Health. And the positivity rate that we should be aiming for to even consider entering the school in any way, shape, or form, either in a hybrid model or a full in-person model, is a positivity rate less than 3%. That's what most communities around the region are looking at. So we need to look at the two different metrics. We need to look at the case count and we also need to look at the positivity rate when we are considering making a decision about how we want to proceed. And so I just put up for you on this slide, this is last week's data, last Wednesday in East Hampton. So East Hampton is yellow. Total case counts since they started calculating cases, that's not in a week, is 124. The two-week case count is nine. Average daily incident rate per 100,000 is 3.96. The change in the case count is lower, it's trending lower. Total tests, 7,000, that's since we started. Total tests in the last 14 days, 2,600. Positive tests in the last 14 days is 11. Percent positivity is .42 in East Hampton. So we're much, we're below that 3% positivity rate. And the change in the percent positivity is lower. So those, we're looking at trends. Are we going lower? Are we going higher? And so the safety metrics that I'm alluding to, I just want to point out, in New York State, they're looking at a 5% positive testing rate in the region. Schools will close if the regional infection rate is greater than 9% on a seven-day average. New York City itself is considering a 3% positive testing rate in the city. The Centers for Disease Control and the World Health Organization both call for at least a 5% positive testing rate, I mean, more than a 5% positive testing rate in the region before you consider closing schools. Under 5%, they're saying you should be in school. Harvard Global Health Institute, 3% positive testing rate in the area. 1 to 10 new cases daily, 7 to 70 new cases weekly per 100,000. And in Connecticut, fewer than 10 new cases daily and 70 new cases weekly per 100,000. So those are some of the metrics that other states and organizations are using to drive a decision about whether schools should be in session or not. Now, I know all of that is beside the point that, you know, we still have challenges in our schools. But I know that next week you'll be faced with thinking about whether we begin to allow special populations back into our school in mid-October. So I'm assuming you'll want to look at some of the data, like test positivity rates and like the case counts in not just East Hampton, but around the area. So those are the pieces of information I wanted to provide you. And you see if you had any questions about it.
Anybody? Mayor?
Well, one, that was a great presentation. And I actually just texted Pat Coniff and said, you should have Superintendent Leclerc give her health metric presentation. So you might, you might have a request coming. No, I- No, I thought it was, it was really good. The, the question that, that I had around it. Is. If. The, the health metric and not waiting a week, so I just want to make sure I understand. If, if we were to get, I don't know, two or three cases. Even if it was somebody in the schools, we wouldn't necessarily after one week go back to remote. We would follow the state model of the three week trend. I mean, so we, there's an option to immediately roll back if we were hybrid. But it's, it's about that three week period.
Well, I think we're talking about two different things, so.
Okay.
If we, I think we should look at three weeks worth of data before you make a decision to roll to the next level.
Okay, okay.
But if we have to roll back, we can do that quickly. So, but would we roll back for just one student, we probably would not. I mean, unless, that, that's up to you, but you know, there are instances in other communities. Where we're seeing a case come up, it may have nothing to do, and it probably has nothing to do with school. Remember, school, we're masked, we're hand sanitizing with socially distancing, and so. You know, it. We may, I mean, we may be faced, honestly, if you read the New York Times the other day, there's, there was an article about it. Maybe four to five years before there's a vaccine, we may be faced with. Cases ongoing, you know, one year, one there for years to come, because this could take. Years to make 15 billion doses of a vaccine.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, I read that article and I was like, whoa, how would that, yeah. No, thanks for the, the pulling that apart.
If there was a, if there was a cluster in our schools, or if there was an immediate need to roll back. We have the ability now with the laptops to tell the kids, take your laptops, you're going home. We would want to look at multiple weeks of data before we go to a phase that's more in place.
Understood, thank you.
Mayor, and you had a question?
Just a comment, I don't believe that that presentation got sent out to us.
It did.
Yeah.
Bree to review it, so I will send it to you right after this meeting.
Thank you, I just think it'd be great for us to be able to have as a reference point, because I think again, I agree with Mayor LaChapelle, it was very clean and clear and precise. And so thank you very much, I think it's exactly the kind of science-based decision-making that we're going to need going forward. So having that as a reference point, hopefully not for four years to come, but at least maybe just for the next six months or so. Something, we'll see how long we have to do this for, but it'll be great to have a reference point always to come back to, so thank you.
So I do have a question and mine is, and again, it was, it was very clear, very. It was a great presentation, but my question is. Is there a piece that's missing from this in terms of like, is there a magic number? Per building that you would close that building and leave the other ones open, do we have a plan for that? How many cases in, in one building, like if it was Maple, how many in that one, how many in the high school? Are we starting to think about that as, as a bar?
We have some conversations about it and there are. There are some factors, it's not as clean as just saying if there's a case. If we get a report on a Monday morning that a student started showing symptoms over the weekend. Well, that student had not been with those stu, their classmates since the previous Friday. So the classmates may just need to be tested, but they may not need to quarantine for 14 days.
Right.
Because that student didn't infect them on Monday, they didn't come to school. So there's a lot of factors that come into play when you're talking about this. It's very different to be in a class in elementary school. For six and a half hours a day with the same group of kids. Than it is to be at the high school where you only see kids for like 60 minutes. And then you move on to a different room, so you know, the, the rate that you're exposed to students may differ as well. So those are things that we need to consider and factor in. You know, if, if we start in the hybrid model. And Cindy, you're a student and you're in school Monday and Tuesday. And then on Friday, you begin to have symptoms, but you let your parents let the school know. Then you may not have been exposing the students on Monday and Tuesday. We may notify them to get tested and have their parents watch them. But you know, it's different than if, you know, there's a cluster in the classroom.
Right. But you don't have a no, a magic number yet for that. Okay, Lori had a question.
Well, you have to be careful with that as well, because that student who has COVID could have siblings in another school. So it's not just tracing the students, then you have to think about family members as well.
I, I, I would say though, that I agree that I think developing something like that will be helpful for us. So that we can be quicker in the future when we have to make a decision about going backwards. But I also would suggest that we definitely wait to get some information again about the individual buildings. And that will, so it's not just how many kids they're interacting with, it's what the building, like we should probably make a per building sort of framework.
That's what I was thinking, yeah, that's what I was thinking is if you had a vision per building, because each building is so unique. You know, there's a huge difference between the high school and Maple.
Yep.
You don't want to use the same, the same idea. Okay, so that's coming up, so Shannon?
I was just, who's, who's working on those types of things, Allison? I was, one of the questions that I had written down was like health procedures and stuff like that.
We have a COVID response team, Sarah's on this. Call and she is chairing the committee, I'm on it. Nellie Taylor, the union president is on it. We have an epidemiologist from Bay State who is a parent at Center Peppin, she's on it. Our school physician's on it. Our school nurse, our district RN is on it. And so, and Bree is on it, our city health agent, and they're all working on like those kind of health. Health things, those specific health things.
And Lori's on it, right?
I'm on it, yes.
Yes, but if you're more qualified, that's their area of expertise.
They're more qualified. I'm just very interested.
Okay, thank you.
They're meeting tomorrow night, actually. We're meeting.
I'll be interested to find those visions for each building as they go along, but I think we've made good progress. So is there anything else you need to present before we go on to our payrolls and warrants?
No, I think I'm all set, I think I would just reiterate that. We're doing, we're doing okay in remote learning so far. So, you know, again, I think it's, it's a work in progress, but we're moving forward.
Excellent, excellent.
And I, I'll just comment that, you know, as you stated in your presentation, those are the metrics that we're going to need for next week to start to review this. Obviously, just to confirm, yes, those are the metrics that we're going to want to hear from you on and have gathered to be, for us to help review that. And, and also looking at the other neighboring towns and all those different pieces that sort of are playing into our choice students and.
I've developed a document where I'm tracking not just East Hampton, but the other communities. So I'll share that with you prior to the meeting, because I'll just, I've got the last few weeks in it, so I'll just drop this Wednesday's in once we get it.
And can you also share with, because I know Dale had it, share with. The whole committee, the number of staff per town coming for, per city and town and the number of choice students. And CTEC students, because that would help too, just so that they have a vision when they're looking at your metrics. Oh yeah, that's why that one is, is valued at a higher, higher rate, yes, sir.
I, I don't want to throw too large, large of a monkey wrench into this, so we can totally quickly just say no. But I guess the piece that in my mind, as I think about this is, as you know, Dr. Leclerc just mentioned. Wednesday is the big day that the state puts out this data. So if we get that data on Wednesday and we don't reflect it until the following Tuesday, it's almost a week old at that point.
Yep.
I'm just going to put out the idea, not necessarily that I even think we have to or should, but. Would we want to consider changing the night of school committee for our meetings to be able to reflect? A quicker return on the data, so for example, if we were to meet on Thursdays going forward. We would get the data, we'd be able to reflect the next day as a school committee about whether or not we wanted to act or anything like that. And then be able to make decisions on that as opposed to waiting an entire almost week later. So it's just a suggestion, it's just the thought, I know structurally, we've already got Tuesdays and all those things, but I just wanted to put it out there. Because we are going to be making this decision sort of ongoing and we're going to be, want to be able to sometimes make a quick decision. And having to wait a week after getting new data may be too long.
Yeah, I agree, I, the idea of getting information that's almost a week old is really a little hard, Lori?
In this type of emergency, is it necessary to wait to for a meeting? I don't think so, I don't think we should reschedule our school committee meetings. And I don't think it's necessary to have weekly meetings going forward. I, I think the mayor could answer, if there's an emergency situation like Pope Francis had, you know, to decide in one day to close down. I know that they're not a public school, but I, I don't think it has to wait for us to meet as a school committee.
My guess is, and tell me if I'm wrong, Mayor, and you're actually talking about the move in shift. From say, remote plus to hybrid decisions, not those emergency decisions. Because we're still waiting for that vision of how many cases per building would be a shutdown. Right, Mayor, is that where you're going, or were you thinking for everything?
I mean. I, I think, you know, for instance, next week, we're going to be meeting on Tuesday to talk about if we want to move to hybrid. I mean, and we're going to be making a decision about on data that's a week old. You know, I, 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 I know it's a big shift, I know it's a structural thing that we all have our Tuesday night set in place and, you know. But that, it's just a suggestion, it's just a question about whether or not we'd want to consider shifting our night meeting. And it's both for proactive, you know, moving advanced into a new system as well as, yeah, I mean. I, I think it is for our school committee to be deciding whether or not we're suddenly saying, we're going to, we're going to shut down the schools and how we need to do that. So that is for us to decide as far as I understand, and so that is mean we have to meet to be able to, to make that decision.
Um, Dr. Leclerc?
So I would say just a couple of things, so the data that you get weekly is actually for the previous 14 days. So you get, you get, there's a carryover, if you will. So you're getting data that's, that's larger than just for that week. So there is some overlap there, I would say that first. Secondly, I would say. I, you may need, if you're having this conversation, you may need to put some parameters around it. Because if you were meeting in person, which I know we're probably not going there for a little while. But I think many of you can recall that if you ever wanted to change the night of a meeting. It would be, it would be difficult to do because there are different city meetings. Every night of the week, and so I think Thursday night off the top of my head is planning committee, Wednesday night is city council. So, you know, Sue Colby would always kind of say to you, no, you can't change it to this night. Because the, you know, the, there's already a scheduled meeting in the city on that night. So I think we need to be aware of that and it may not have any bearing right now while we're in this virtual world. But it probably would not be able to be something you could do permanently. Because then there would be some conflict with other, with other councils that meet. And so it would probably pull the mayor in multiple directions in one night, you know, for example. So I'm just, I'm just putting that, I'm just putting that out there. But I just recall that when we were in person, Sue Colby would sometimes say. No, Barbara won't, you know, like these meetings are scheduled like a year in advance, so.
But I think because we're meeting virtually, we have some flexibility, we've done that. And next Tuesday. Yeah, Sue, you can tell us we're wrong if we.
Well, again, I think that it's, what's important here is that it's not, we're not talking about shifting in-person meetings. We're talking about, we're in virtual meetings for the near, for the foreseeable future. So as long as we, all of our schedules could change, then we could change it with some degree of. Time and planning, so.
And next week, we're going to be talking about whether or not to just begin remote plus early, we're not jumping a phase. So it would be special pops coming in early, which is a, an important conversation. I, I like Mayor's idea. Just because I hate meeting on Tuesday and getting new information on Wednesday. But I'll live with it, I, I, I'm wondering how everybody else feels about it. Shannon?
Sorry, I'm trying to unmute myself.
You just. Remuted yourself, Shannon.
You were good, good.
Okay, there we go. So my, I guess my first question is, are we even going to be ready to go remote plus? How, where are we with the reviews of the buildings?
The reviews have been completed, we're just waiting for the write-up. And we're, we're working on a plan now and will most likely propose remote plus. Perhaps just in one building, in a building that we feel will be. We'll meet with the mayor's, you know, satisfaction as far as bringing this small group of students in. But again, that would be at the mayor's discretion.
And I guess the next question would be is, where are we with union negotiations, are we going to have people to actually go into these buildings?
Yeah, I, I think definitely, yeah. We have people working in the buildings now, I mean. You know, there's, they're not, they don't have students in there, but. There are a lot of people that, not a lot, but probably 30, 30% of the people are in the buildings right now. Because all their materials are there and they might have wifi there and they don't have a very good signal at home. Or they have kids at home, so they want to come into work and get their work done. So we're not open to the public, but there are staff members that are in there.
Okay, and like the, the COVID-19 response team will be ready? You know, with, with plans and procedures and all that stuff?
And these will be very small groups of students.
Okay. I'm just curious.
Yeah, there might be three or four students, you know, in a group, it's going to be small.
I guess my input would be, I feel like such a vast structural change for any length of time is. Probably something we should at least think about, I certainly though, would support. Like, I don't know. We could just do, you know, one week, we meet a day or two later, just for the sake of having this conversation about. Opening where that information is immediately relevant to our conversation. I certainly see value in that and I'll just say my schedule is, to my knowledge, available next. Wednesday and Thursday at 6:00. But it will not always be.
Okay. And one of the things we could do is since our target is every three weeks to look at metrics. We would just change the meeting to that third week. Anybody else want to weigh in, Mayor, Marissa?
I guess the other question I would have is, would East Hampton media be available?
I don't know.
Do, do they have to be for, for what, live streaming?
Yeah, I, I mean, I can record and put up on the cloud, but I mean, send to East Hampton Media.
For live stream though, I do believe they need to be present. Like there's somebody behind the screen there.
Yep, yep, so it does make a difference. Yep. So it does make a difference.
Yeah, the, as far as moving the meeting and, and data, I'm not opposed to that. That there are definitely other meetings, but we also, like tonight, there's a planning meeting that, you know, and, and they're appointment meetings. So I, I think that there are some big meetings that happen that you know, we wouldn't want to schedule over, but to, to be more in sync with data, at least right now, I think has a lot of merit. I'm not sure how it fits for everybody's working schedule and, and whatnot, but, but it does, it makes sense to me.
Yeah. Lori and Marissa? What are you thinking?
I'll need to check in with my family and work. Wednesdays would be better than Thursdays. I don't know if that's too quick to turn around on the data, but.
I could make other work. Now, I, I had misunderstood what Maren was referring to on a continual basis to look at the metrics weekly, but in order to make our bigger decisions, they're all big decisions, but I'm just talking about in case they are back and then there's, and that's what I was. And then I think it would be more of an emergency situation where that's what I didn't get the answer on, Mayor. If we are back in even remote plus and there's an incident and we can't meet, we can't get it on the schedule. And who makes that decision? It's a public health decision, correct?
Yeah, I, I would think that Superintendent Leclerc and her COVID response team would work with the health agent and board of public health to, to make that, that decision and you know, we would put out a statement, but, but I, I would be worried if that kind of emergency decision would be put to this body just because there's so many of us.
Yeah.
And, and of course, we, we'd need to act like that. You know, so that, that's where I, I see that.
I can tell you, I would want to be informed after the fact, but I do not need to slow down a decision that's this important, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I, I, as I say that, I don't. Yeah, I don't know Superintendent Leclerc, when you were talking with the health agent, if that came up at all, but, but it seems to me that would be the, and, and that's what I've done in the past, like there haven't been really split second decisions we've had to make on public health. But, but the couple that we did really comes, it comes out of the board of health. It comes out of the board itself and the health agent will say, look, this really needs to happen now. And it, and they'll do the order pretty, they'll do the order almost immediately and get it up. And I, I don't sign off on those. So I would expect the same here.
Yeah, there are procedures that we do have to follow that we've already been discussing. I mean, I have to notify the city health agent immediately. I have to notify the commissioner of education immediately. You know, we have to have our nurses do contact tracing immediately. There are steps that have to be in place. Our, our school nurses have already gone through contact tracing training or they've been provided.
So Dr. The COVID response team wouldn't even have to be involved at that point. I mean, we would not have to meet it with the steps that you just detailed. That's what would occur, correct Superintendent?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
So then all the more reason then we need to get, if, if, if this group is not even a part of the decision-making process that are, that a school or all of our schools are shutting down, then we definitely have to have very black and white policy decision that is agreed upon and voted upon so that if another body is, or another person is making that decision, then we need to have clarity before that that goes to that person.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, that's that vision per building. I absolutely think we need that in place pretty quickly. Yeah. So, Dr. Leclerc, would a Wednesday or a Thursday meeting be okay with you?
Yes.
Okay, I am totally, I mean, if we want to choose Wednesday, if that's better for everybody. I do, Mayor?
I, I just, Wednesday is fine if it could just not be the Wednesday of city council.
So is this week city council meeting? I should know that.
Yeah.
So next week would be the off week?
Yes.
Okay, so, yeah, I think we need to do this kind of like figure out ahead of time.
Yeah.
But item, I am okay with either. And I, at four o'clock, the material comes out. It is really, you know, short notice, but I think we could have those figures. You know, while we're eating our supper before meeting or whatever, tying everything up. I don't know, it's up to you. I can do either. Do we want to make a suggestion of changing it? Pick a night and then have a vote, Maren?
I, I can't do for the next, you know, I've, I've actually have a class from five thirty to six thirty on Wednesdays that I can't change.
Okay, that would be important.
Like next five weeks.
Okay.
So I couldn't do next Wednesday unless we want to do later as well. So I mean, you know. But Thursday I can shift around. Or I can go later on Wednesday. I'm sorry, I can't.
That's okay.
Five weeks anyway, I can't change that five thirty class.
We're doing this just, you know, this was your idea too, so we're. So do we want to make a suggestion and have a vote and decide, step forward? Anybody? Or do we want to leave?
I mean, I'll, I'll just speak up then because I mean, it, it sounds like there's a little bit of differences and I'm not sure who else has a fixed thing that they can't change versus, you know. Marissa, I certainly respect you saying Wednesday was better than Thursday. And also maybe we should even before we go further is we talked about only doing this every three weeks or something like that, right? So are we just right now talking about next week's meeting? That we would change the time?
Correct, yes.
So is next Wednesday at either five thirty or, excuse me, six thirty work better for people or Thursday at six if it needs to stay at six o'clock?
Six thirty is fine with me. I.
I can do either of those for a single week. I just don't want to make a commitment to a semi-per minute change without talking to other people in my way.
Yeah, this is only, we're only talking every three weeks and we'll figure out ahead of time whether or not we're going to change it to a Wednesday or a Thursday. So for this time, it's only next week. Okay, I'm up for either. So do we want to make it when, Wednesday is easier for Marissa? And better for Maren to do six thirty on Wednesday? Is that okay with everybody? All right, somebody make a motion, let's second it, let's vote and we'll change the meeting to next Wednesday.
I'll go for it since I'm the one that put forward the idea. So for next Wednesday, well, we're going to change our scheduled September twenty-second, six P M. meeting from that Tuesday to Wednesday, September the twenty-third, starting at six thirty P M.
I'll second that. All right, roll call.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Oh, great, sorry.
Mayor Goldstein, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye. Good, we changed the meeting.
Actually, oh my goodness, I just, okay. I need to throw one thing into the mix. I'm so sorry, but I just literally did, I was literally changing it in my calendar and I saw something and I just want to make sure that we know this when we're making this decision. So we have a union negotiation meeting on Wednesday at three thirty. I didn't know.
It's still five.
Just, no, no, I understand that. But were we expecting to have any decision coming out of the Tuesday night meeting to go into that Wednesday? No, so we could have something coming out of the union meeting coming into our Wednesday school committee meeting now in terms of decision-making process. Okay, I just wanted to double check.
No, that's a great, that's a.
All those details, everybody, it's just details.
That's a good, that's a really good question because we don't want to mess that up. So I love it. Okay.
And we do have a school building meeting on that Tuesday, the twenty-second at five P M. For those of us who do that. So we won't have a school committee meeting after that.
Thanks, Maren.
All right. Okay, so we have changed the meeting to next Wednesday, September twenty-third at six thirty, and now we're going to move on to accounts payable and warrants.
All right, I make a motion to accept the accounts payable warrant dated nine, ten, twenty twenty in the amount of one hundred twenty thousand, five hundred twenty-five dollars and fifty-six cents.
I'll second that.
Roll call. Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye.
I make a motion to accept the payroll dated nine, ten, twenty twenty in the amount of five hundred twenty-three thousand, eight hundred twenty-seven dollars and ninety-one cents.
I'll second that.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye. Excellent. Do we have anything under other before we take a roll call vote to go into executive session? Shannon?
Hi.
Hi.
I just wanted to ask about the Champions question that was brought up last week. Did we get any information from them as far as numbers, et cetera?
I did email the, I'm sorry, you can hear me right? Okay. I did email James who oversees the Champions program. And we did have a conversation. We're setting up a meeting because I did tell him that there's possibly a way that they can use the high school space, a space in the high school. But it probably can't be the cafeteria. There are some other uses for the cafeteria that the principal has in mind. And it will be needed for possibly voting and, you know, athletics, whatever. So, so we can't do it in there. So we were looking at possibly the library area in the high school. So James and I are trying to coordinate a meeting right now.
Okay, thank you very much. I just had a couple more questions, sorry.
Sure.
Have the bus schedules and everything been straightened out? I know there was some issues as far as.
The, the bus schedules for the Smith-Vogue, you mean?
Yeah, and is everything else that we said tomorrow, right?
Those schedules are always on our district website every summer. And people are sent a letter to tell them where to find the schedule. And they all were sent the letter this summer and the schedules are there. You know, I will say in fairness, Dale reached out to the two people that communicated to us via email, should two people and explained to them where it, where it is exactly on the website. And I think that in fairness, there's a lot of return to school stuff on our website right now, probably more so than other previous summers. So there's a lot there to kind of cull through, but yeah, the schedules are there for, for Smith and C-Tech.
Okay, I was just curious. And the last thing is I would request if we can put on the agenda for the next meeting, if, if there's time, to talk about our public speak policy. I was going through my notes from last week and during public speak, someone had brought up a question in regards to whether or not they could speak more than once at a one meeting or another. So I was just wondering if we could, you know, bring that up and kind of go over it again at our next meeting.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
That's it, I'm sorry.
Okay. So we're good, right? No other suggestions? Okay, let's have a roll call vote to go into executive session.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Marissa Curry, aye.
And Cynthia Kuzinski, aye. I thank you, everybody. We will not be returning. We will be adjourning from our executive session. So we'll see you next Wednesday. All right, good night, everyone. I'd like to thank Ben before he goes off. Bye, Ben. Thank you for always being there and always helping. I know we can't say anything now, it's not public. Bye, Ben. Okay, so now we're just waiting for Linda.
I need like thirty seconds. I'll be back.
Okay. And Ben to sign off. Good, excellent.
And East Hampton Media too, right?
East Hampton Media does not have to wait. They are done for the night.